As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the work session for May 26, 2022, for the Stanton City Council to order. The first item, we had it listed as the annual visit to Betsy Bell. We did not have an in-person form in order to visit Betsy Bell, so we will be moving that particular field trip to our next meeting agenda for the beginning of the work session. That takes us to item number two, which is a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, thank you for that. Yeah, thank you. Oh, yeah, we don't want to forget her. All right. On May 25, 2022, I received a request from Councillor Dole to participate remotely in the May 26, 2022 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councillor Dole's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council's procedural memorandum number three.
Mayor Oaks.
Councillor Mead.
I move to allow Councillor Councillor Dole to remotely participate in the May 26, 2022 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
And a mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I will second that.
All right, there's a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. Councillor Dole, can you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
1,003 East Beverly Street.
All right, could everyone on council as well as the audience here, Councillor Dole?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, well, welcome. We got you in here. Right, now that takes us to item number two, right, Mr. Blair? All right.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented as far as the work session, but I would like to make a following change to the regular meeting. Madam Mayor, I move to amend the regular meeting agenda and add item G to discuss and consider the council's liaison to the new Equity and Diversity Commission.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Okay. Okay, all right. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks.
Councillor Darby.
I will second that for purposes of discussion and consideration of the liaison to the Diversity and Equity Commission.
All right, there's a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
No.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So that'll be item G, add it to the regular agenda, discussion and consideration of the discussion and consideration of the liaison position for the Equity and Diversity Commission. Is that proper, Mr. Blair? Motion, okay. I'm on it. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented, as amended, excuse me.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second. This is Councillor Darby.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion?
This is Carolyn Dole. I can't, I wasn't able to hear anything that I'm assuming it was Mr. Blair saying earlier. So just, you know, if we're going to have him involved in discussions, I need to be able to hear him.
Certainly. Get you a microphone that's
working properly.
Ms. Dole, apologies, there usually is a microphone over there, but tonight there was not one, but to repeat what I said, now that the council has amended the agenda, the motion needed to be a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as amended, and I believe Vice Mayor Robertson made that motion.
And Councillor Darby seconded.
All right, so there is a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That takes us to the next item, which is a discussion of resolution approving city council meeting schedule for the remainder of 2022. Ms. Beauregard.
Mr. Blair will walk us through this item this evening.
All right, welcome back, Mr. Blair.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Oaks and council. We'll take these one at a time, but in a lot of ways, the next two items are interrelated. As you may recall, the 2021 session of the Virginia General Assembly passed a law which stated that all local elections must be held in November rather than May. After the General Assembly enacted that law and Governor Northam signed it, the council then voted last, I get, last spring, not summer, but spring, to move its 2022 May elections that were under the previous law, and the council had an option to move it to either November of 2021 or November of 2022, and the council voted to move it to November of 2022. As with other localities that have been doing May elections, this caused a lot of questions, and one of those was what happens to the mayoral term, and we'll get into that in item four, but really, an issue that is related is that in your, at your July 1, 2020 meeting, organizational meeting, you approved a schedule of meetings that ran through June 30 of 2022. And so to comply with this new law, again, your organizational meeting will be in January of 2023, once the new council is seated. But since that resolution from July of 2020 only ran through June 30 of this year, there does need to be a schedule adopted by this council for July through December of 2022. So item number three on the work session is interim city manager Beauregard polled the council, and there appeared to be majority support for only having one meeting in July and August being the second meetings, which would be the fourth Thursday of those months. Additionally, the schedule before you, per the council's custom, it has always been that the council held one meeting in November and one meeting in December. So the resolution before you for your meeting schedule for July through December of this year states that you will have your meetings in July and August. There will only be one meeting, which will be on the fourth Tuesday of the months. And your meetings in November and December, you will only have one meeting, which will be on the second Tuesday of November and of December. And so this schedule, again.
Thursday, right?
Thursday.
Thursday, I'm sorry, not Tuesday. This schedule before you is reflective of that. And again, as this is a work session item, I think, and that the schedule is largely at your control. Well, it's all at your control, except you have to have one meeting per month, per state law and the city charter. I would offer this up to council for its discussion.
Are there any questions for Mr. Blair? So we're looking at having one meeting in July and one in August, and that'll be the second Thursday.
Or the fourth Thursday.
Yeah, pardon me, I'm sorry. The second meeting will be on the fourth Thursday for July and also for August. And then for, just like normal, November and December will have the first meeting, the second Thursday of November and December only because of the holidays.
Correct.
And I think, I mean, for the, which mentioned earlier, you know, I like the idea because it gives city staff a chance to actually plan their vacations, you know, without having to come up with all kinds of stuff for us and whatever. So that's the reason I like it, but.
Are you good with this?
Absolutely. Yes, it would be much appreciative. Staff would very much appreciate it. And we look months ahead on the agendas. So we plan out months ahead, so I don't think this will cause any hardships to do this at all as far as planning for future meetings.
All right, thank you. All right. Anything else, Mr. Blair?
Not for that item.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four, a discussion of ordinance to transition the mayoral and vice mayoral elections to January. Ms. Beauregard, I'm assuming you're going to hand it over to Mr. Blair.
Thank you. And again, to comply with the state law and the council moving its elections to November of 2022, per state code, those new councillors will take office in January of 2023. So the ordinance before you will reflect that the organizational meeting at which you elect the mayor and vice mayor and set the meeting schedule will occur in January now instead of May, instead of July, which was based on May elections. The other thing that I will let the council know is that state law, the way it was written, overrides the city charter. However, it's likely, I will try to be coming back to you this fall with some proposed charter amendments. Again, nothing substantive, but just to clean up, the charter also has May elections rather than November, and that needs to be cleaned up. But unfortunately, only the General Assembly can amend the charter, so we'll have to have a resolution from council asking the General Assembly to amend the charter to reflect the November rather than May elections.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Blair? All right, so this will be on the regular meeting agenda. It will be, let's see here.
F.
F.
And E.
G, or E, E and F.
E and F.
So this is on the regular meeting agenda, E and F. All right, thank you, Mr. Blair. This takes us to item number five, a presentation on community-friendly outdoor lighting design. Ms. Beauregard.
All right, at the request of Mayor Oaks, the Newtown Neighborhood Lighting Committee is here this evening to give a presentation on community-friendly outdoor lighting design. Ms. Sarah Holberg is here, and I believe she will be giving the presentation. There'll be a short presentation followed by some questions, if there are any.
Yes, thank you, and welcome.
Carol is going to give the presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you, and I'm very pleased to be here. Good evening to the council. The first question I have to ask is for our PowerPoint presentation, there's a button I have to push to advance it, and I don't know what it is.
And Ms. Beauregard can help you with that.
Oh, so that's it. Okay, so wait. So wait, we want to go back to the, there, that's fine. Okay. I'm pleased to have your undivided attention. We are pleased for the next 15 minutes, so we're going to move right along. That explains who we are. And most of you know who we are because we've done this before. So we're here to address light pollution, at least that's my part. And what is it, and why should you care about it? So we've come a long way in this country, in this world, from candles and log cabins, and much of American ingenuity over the decades has been guided by the philosophy that bigger is better. So we've bigger houses, bigger cars, bigger and brighter lights. Now, uh, so, wait, I'm going to push the down one. There we go. Okay. Today, our guiding principles are more likely to be efficiency and conservation. We no longer think that bigger is better. We've got the tiny house and the Mini Cooper and so on and so forth. To see how things have escalated, take a look at that map. As you can see, the upper left, the late 1950s, that was the amount of lighting that was affecting the sky going straight up. And in 2000, what is that? I can't really read it. Anyway, you can see what the difference is, and it continues to get greater and greater and greater. And it has enormous effect, not just obliterating the night sky and our view of the stars, it's much, much bigger than that. So, um, more is better is not a good philosophy for lighting because it does lead to light pollution, and that's what we need to correct immediately, if not sooner. Brighter lighting is not community-friendly. It's not environmentally sound, nor is it safer. And that comes as a big surprise to a lot of people. It was indeed gratifying and timely that our governor, earlier in the month, issued a proclamation that recognized International Dark Sky Week. So people are really becoming aware on higher levels. So light pollution affects the environment as much as it trespasses on personal privacy. It determines visual comfort at night. It affects quality of life and has a major negative impact on safety, as I said earlier. So light pollution is even detrimental to human health, and there are statistics to prove that, which you'll hear about. So, yes, the pitfalls of overlighting are significant. Unshielded and overly bright outdoor lighting results in glare. And glare, if you want the most precise definition, means that the light emitted from whatever fixture exceeds the eye's ability to adapt, and thereby it reduces visibility. So that's why brighter is not better. You can't see as well. It does not enhance visibility. Those same overly bright and unshielded lights invade the privacy of residents via light trespass. And overly lit streets and commercial areas can almost literally turn night into day. Indeed, we are blinded by the light. And because so many of those lights are directed up and out instead of down, which is where we need to see, they aren't effective. So LED lighting is the future we're facing now, and it will affect every person in the world. It'll certainly affect every person in this city. And that's what we're concerned with. The way to begin planning for the future of lighting in this city is by understanding the latest technology. Ideally, you can set an example that other cities will follow by making Stanton a model for economic and residential development, by showing that Stanton can plan wisely for the future while preserving its historic past. And now I'm going to turn you over to Barbara Whipple, who will provide more than any great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome, Barbara.
Hello, hello, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm sorry, Mr. Claffey's not here because many of you have already had this presentation. It's a little bit different, little bit different presentation. Okay, let me see if I do this right. Okay, this is one that you didn't get to see. We'll get back to parts of it, but it is part of what you must be concerned about around light pollution. These are some of the components. So I am going to talk about the problems with lighting, and in particular LEDs. Because the problems of excessive and misdirected artificial lighting are not new ones at all, but they've taken on a new urgency because of the rise of the LED to center stage. It's the star now. The LED is transforming the way we illuminate our cities and towns and our homes, but we're talking about outdoor lighting. While offering amazing opportunities to improve how we use energy and live at night, the stakes are high. If this complex technology is not thoroughly understood and correctly applied, outcomes depend critically on policymakers and city staff and the public having a solid grasp on, number one, best community-friendly lighting practices and principles, and second, the LED's critical part in that formula. So the LED is a truly miraculous invention. It uses a fraction of the energy of previous lights. Yay, right? Less carbon emissions and cost to consumers. Has a much longer life expectancy than earlier lights. Can be focused precisely on what is meant to be illuminated. Needs no warm-up period. Can be easily and inexpensively adjusted to higher and lower levels of intensity. No wonder it's a star, but it turns out that LEDs, when misunderstood, have enormous potential for becoming a light pollution menace, far worse than previous generations of lighting. And here's why. The vast majority of LEDs used today emit what's called blue-rich white light that is ill-suited to human vision. You know this light, you've been in it. It's eerily hard and intense and cold. White, sorry, while blue-white LEDs have the greatest energy efficiency, extensive scientific research studies confirm that its use and overuse are clearly linked to increased glare and compromised vision, especially in the aging eye. I care about that. Now, let's see. I think we have something out of order, but that's okay. It's clearly linked to potential road safety problems for motorists and pedestrians alike due to glare and clutter. I think I'm going to have to go back. You can see glare and you can see light clutter. It also has harmful impacts on wildlife behavior and reproduction due to the disturbance of feeding, migratory, and reproductive, and rest patterns that are dependent upon natural night darkness. And in the human sphere, increased risks for obesity, depression, sleep disorders, diabetes, and certain cancers. These are concerns that are officially affirmed by the American Medical Association, and all primarily due to disturbance of circadian rhythms. The good news is there are warm LEDs, which produce a more natural calm light, thereby greater visual comfort and less environmental impact. And here's what's great. Rapid advances in LED technology have greatly improved their energy efficiency, their cost, and their availability. Warm LEDs are crucial, but are a crucial, but not a singular factor in the best use of all LEDs. In our zeal to embrace LEDs, we are missing the essential challenge that all LEDs have greater intensity than traditional lights. You know those blinding pinpoints when you look up into an LED. You know what that does. You really can't look at it. Other technical considerations for lighting quality and the consistent use of sensible lighting principles really are vital to the formula. I am so sorry, but I seem to be way off. We're looking at some glare images. These are images that show you what white, the blue-white LED looks like. So here is a reference to health and environmental concerns that have to do with melatonin suppression. These are not in your literature, so I apologize that I don't seem to be able to to do two things at once.
Okay.
So, anyway, in the absence of these factors that we've been discussing, our misuse of LEDs in all artificial lighting adds to some other risks to personal safety by blinding us to threats. So I want you to look at this image, and you'll look on the left, and you can't see anybody because of the blinding glare of that light. And look to the right, there's a person standing there that is also in the left image. Okay, there we go. So do you see what's happening? You cannot see the person who's standing there. Oh, boy.
Here we go.
There you go. The other thing is that the risk exists of making victims and properties, property easier to see at night. So certain studies have shown a correlation between brightly lit streets and increased crime. Too often, aging infrastructure, and we are, we have plenty of it in this city, especially in the form of streetlights right now, gets replaced without careful examination of how much light actually needs to be used and the choice of minimum levels required for security and safety. Economic and population growth are happening very quickly in our area. Lamp and fixture choices made today will affect the quality of our night lighting for decades and maybe longer. We need to be very deliberate and thoughtful about these matters now. And Sarah's going to take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Carol, I didn't thank you, so thank you for your presentation. Excellent job. Hey, Sarah.
Hi, okay, so we're getting some good practice, and if we can all do this. All right, so I'm going to talk about solutions. We've talked about the problems, and there are solutions. This is a good, light pollution is fortunately one of the things that actually don't cost more, and you can actually solve without hurting anything and hurting economically either. So is this the one? Okay, so just to go over where the trends are, this is fast-changing. This is a technological newness. We're dealing with new technology. We're also learning more about visibility. There are really interesting studies saying, how do we actually see? What do we actually need for light, what works? And so this we can apply to our lighting decisions. There's also more pedestrian emphasis. For one thing, it's not like the old days. Now our headlights can really take in the roadway. We don't need lighting of the roadways, but we do need lighting when we're outside, whether we're a pedestrian or just being outside. So the pedestrians are more of the users, in a sense. We need to address the negative impacts now that we can recognize them because this is a new technology. So we're only just finding out what the glitches are. That's sort of where we are right now. There's sort of the first generation of the software, and then you realize what you want to fix with the next one. And we can look to adaptive controls, which are a wonderful opportunity. We're not really there in seeing it in operation, but that's what LEDs can do. In your packet, this is included, these five principles. And I'll just go over quickly that, you know, useful, that means, is there a use for that light? Sometimes no lighting or less lighting are called for. Secondly, targeted basically is only where needed, and that often is represented in full shielding. The level, is it no brighter than necessary? And that level is going down, again, as we have the research and the experience. The LEDs tend to be The LEDs tend to be brighter. They're a whole lot brighter. So the conversion, if you say, ah, 50 watts, 50 LEDs, it's not like that. It's way more. And we're just starting to get better calibration of that or awareness. And so there's standards that are out there that VDOT and companies and everybody else uses, but frankly, there's a lag. So we're understanding that that needs to be adapted downward, but we're not there yet. So part of this awareness building is to hold on and realize that these standards are coming down and being more realistic. For example, there's a VDOT practices, a VDOT memo, the guidelines for VDOT, recognize a lot of these factors. And control, again, this is the future, and you can put in the capability of controls, even if you're not gonna use them yet. And then the color, as Carol mentioned, we're just learning more about that. So these are concepts of good lighting, just the light we need, where and when we need it, and seeing the light, not the source. The bug rating is an interesting one. This is available for most fixtures. You can see whether a fixture, you know, it's rated zero to five, will it give you backlight, which is basically light trespass, or uplight, which is going upward into the sky, and glare, which is right at your eye and painful. And this shows, for example, the one on the right is the full cutoff, which is where the light is directed to the target, and LEDs are very good at that. Seeing the light, not the source, this is an easy way when you're just looking at lights. A lot of these are, of course, previous generation, but you can see the light itself, which kind of turns it into what's loosely can be called a glare bomb, because you're seeing the light instead of what the light is supposed to illuminate. These are examples of good street lighting, where they're shielded and they're going downward. For example, they're parallel to the ground and up in the fixture. You can't see the bulb. Here are some examples, just some pairs of, you know, bad or typical, and a better example. In commercial areas, a glare bomb on the top and below, they're pointing downwards. Gas stations, we all know gas stations are highly lit, but the one on the bottom shows that you could, you can see better in the lower screen. The lighting is going only where it's needed. Parking lots, the glare bombs on top and below, again, you can envision being in that parking lot and being able to, you know, find your car and put your key in and drive away. So there are multiple factors to consider. It's not just go get the bulb off the shelf anymore. There are a lot of factors and often need, you know, professional advice, but the quality, like how is it shielded? Is it shielded? Is it the right level of blue to what we know now for the use? The quantity, how much wattage do you need and how much is, you know, what's the intensity? And the number of fixtures that you put out there? How much do you have? And the control is there to be able to adjust the amount and also the timing. And I just wanted to show you a good example. This is just a block away. If you come at night, if you had come years ago, you would see the top picture. The city did, and the church did a wonderful rehab, and the last thing they did was put up lights for the first time, and it was a shock, because they were brighter than the church anticipated, way brighter than the neighbors were used to, and it was a problem with the glare. And at the bottom, you can see that after 2019, NNA brought in a lighting consultant, some of you may remember, Bob Parks came to town, and he worked with the church, a church with a willing partner. They did a lot of interesting modifications, I think four or so modifications to the fixtures of, you know, the color. I think this is 2,500 or even maybe 2,400 warm, a very warm light, which is what people liked. And you can see in this picture that the light is on the path. You can look at the fixtures comfortably, and if you're on that path, you can see everything else in the churchyard. No one's lurking. You can see everything in the bushes. So what we're talking about is that community-friendly lighting is really for many factors, and Stanton, you know, the whole package is this quality of lighting. Stanton is a community with character, and it's not everywhere USA, and that's what community-friendly lighting is about. It's all the elements that a community needs and all these values. It's not just, you know, a single, a single feature. And Stanton does have excellent examples. Churchville Avenue is excellent, and the city knows how to make attractive, functional environment during the day. It just could take the same attention to make the environment good at night. And we have the potential to do this citywide. I know our examples tend to be in the historic areas, that they're the fixtures a city put up and that businesses have, but this should be a citywide potential for everybody to have comfortable and effective lighting. So it's good for citizen health and safety, it's good for economic development, tourists come here, businesses come here to serve the tourists and the city and to do other things, and people want to live here if it's attractive. This is just one of those factors. It's one of those, you know it when you see it kind of things. So here we go. Community-friendly lighting could deliver visibility, safety and health, comfort, need, needs of the environment, cost-effectiveness, economic development. And so in closing, this is a timing issue. This technological revolution has some pitfalls. We're just encouraging the city to stay ahead of the curve. Don't take the default, because there's better options if you look for them or if you, you know, are ready for them. And this is a decision for a generation. I think these are good for 20, 25 years. And as Barbara's slides showed, for safety, brighter is not always better. We're looking for effective lighting. And so I hope that the value of community-friendly lighting is something that, you know, makes sense to you all now. And thank you for your time, and we are available if you have questions or anybody wants to explore anything further.
We're running just a tad over, but I do wanna give the council members an opportunity to ask any questions. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Councillor Mead.
Thanks. I think this might be the third time I've seen the presentation from you all, and I very much appreciate it. I am, I'm a big believer in this kind of community-friendly lighting. So, so in a sense, you're preaching to the choir.
Yeah.
But I'd like to know what concrete actions by city council would you all like to see in order to promote the kind of lighting environment that you're talking about? And what kind of timeframe?
Well, I, we appreciate the time to be here, because I think education is the most of it, and sometimes you don't know what's coming up in another department or somebody who's not officially a light. Nobody are lighting experts. So I think if the council is aware to look at whatever comes up, you know, some plan, every plan's gonna have lights as part of it. So that's one thing, if the, if the whole city department and the mentality and the awareness is that this is an issue and a possibility to do well. And another one is if the city has its own standards, its own feeling of what it wants, you know, you could make that clear when anything happens in the city from the streetlights that Dominion is going to put in or businesses, just put it out there that we know this is what we want. These are our, these are our standards. It may take a while to get there, but that I think is something that it's up to the city to say, this is what we kinda know we want, if that's how you feel. That's...
I would add that ordinances...
Can you come up to the microphone so we can? Well, we wanna have you on the record. Barbara, you wanna come up too, just in case? Carol's got this.
I would just add that you asked what you could do, and I kind of anticipated that question. And ordinances, you know, we need ordinances so that we aren't just saying to people, this is what we'd like you to do. We're saying this is what you must do. Now, those ordinances can apply to whomever, residential, commercial, both, but unless we put some, you know, teeth behind it, people will do what they wanna do.
Thanks. And are there communities that you can cite that have, over a period of, say, a decade, made the transition from the kind of, the old style of lighting to...
That's a Sarah question.
This is coming at everybody at the same time, so nobody really had a handle on it, almost sort of the early adopters. You know, New York City, for example, put in LEDs, whoa, you know, efficient and, you know, environmental because of the efficiency, and they had to backtrack for millions of dollars and undo the, you know, I don't know what Kelvin it was, but it was way too bright. So I think, yeah, so anyway, unfortunately, there's not anybody, we're all in this together, and I think Stanton has a chance to think for itself on this, if that's...
Oh, I'm not...
I wish there were somebody to just grab onto their tailcoats and say, do this.
So we could lead here in this situation.
Well, I wanted to give the Newtown Neighborhood Lighting Committee a chance to address the council, because I know this is something that the committee's been working on for years, and we appreciate your dedication, Carol, Barbara, Sarah. You guys have been dedicated to move this forward for so many years, and I just wanted the council to be, sorry for the pun, but enlightened concerning this issue, because there will be changes in the aesthetics with the city of Stanton, and that should include considering lighting. Thank you. All right, that takes us on to the next item, and that would be a break. We will be on break until 6:40. Anyway, we... Okay, we're back from break. The next item is item number six, roll call. I believe the Vice Mayor is coming around the corner. All right. We are now at the portion of the agenda called Roll Call. Roll Call allows each council member an opportunity to bring forth matters for staff follow-up, either during the same meeting or at a future work session, a regular meeting, if additional time is required, to respond to a council member inquiry. All right, I will start to my left. Vice Mayor Robertson, do you have a question for Ms. Bow regard?
I don't, but I think my councillor to your right has the question that was on my mind, so I'm gonna let her bring that up.
Oh, sure. Councillor Darby.
Ms. Bow regard, could you obtain some information, report back to council about safety measures? Stanton City Schools are looking at, have improving, whatever the case may be, in light of the tragedy that happened this week?
Sure, I can certainly ask Superintendent Smith to provide some information.
Thank you.
All right, Councillor Mead?
I have nothing.
Councillor Dole?
Nothing.
All right. Ms. Bow regard, could you give us the latest update on the animal shelter?
Oh, sure. So we, a press release was, went out today that announced a new shelter director, Lydia Vane is her name. We had, she did, she had an amazing interview. She's very qualified. She has a lot of exciting skill sets to, I think, make the shelter, to improve the operations of the shelter. We've done a lot to make the shelter better, I think, already in terms of the budget, in terms of space, in terms of staffing. So I think Ms. Vane will be a wonderful asset to the shelter, and we're looking forward to her starting on July 5th, I believe is her first day.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Sounds great. The next question I have, Long John Silvers. Is it true that they actually broke a record here in Stanton for the most visits for a grand opening?
I heard something like that, but I did notice the lines have gone down considerably.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to make my way over there.
Actually, that prompted me, I do have another question for you.
Sure.
The, the, I've heard from some citizens and experienced it myself, concern about the flow of traffic at the new Chipotle, Jersey Mike's, that area, seems like there's a lot of congestion and such, and maybe it's still in the phases of being worked out, I don't know. I just would like an update on...
I had not received any complaints myself or to the city manager's office, so I will certainly follow up on that and will send an update.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, it's a closed meeting for one consultation with legal counsel pertaining to probable litigation involving liens against real estate. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to enter a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to probable litigation involving liens against real estate for unpaid utility bills, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 and 2.2-3711A8.
Right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
There is a second.
That's, Councillor Darby is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're now in closed session. All right, I'll entertain a motion to go back out into open session.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed, and that only public business matters as identified in the closed-meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Councillor Darby is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we're back in open session. This concludes the work session for the Stanton City Council for May 26, 2022. We will come back into a regular meeting at 7:30. As the mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the regular meeting of the Stanton City Council for May 26, 2022 to order. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, the next item is the invocation moment of silence, and tonight it's my turn. I just wanted to state that there's been a lot of bad things that have happened in this country here lately. There's been a lot of evil, and it's as though we have some demons walking amongst us, especially with what just recently happened to the children at the elementary school. That was just so incredibly heartbreaking. But fear not, because we do have angels living and walking amongst us. And tonight, I've asked one of Stanton's angels to come and do the invocation for us. And this invocation will be a Christian invocation. If you would like to bow your heads and join in, feel free. If not, no pressure, it is your choice. But tonight, we need, more than ever, to hear the voice of an angel. So I would like to introduce Mr. Ernest Holly. He will be singing... He will be singing the Lord's Prayer. Mr. Holly, the microphone is all yours.
Let us pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debt as we forgive our debtors. But lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever.
Amen. Oh, thank you, Mr. Holly. Thank you so much. Voice of an angel has ended up with a very special treat.
Mr. Holly, if you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. If you, um, wouldn't like to head home, feel free. So, okay, all right. All right, so the next item is the mayor's report. Uh, the first item I have is concerning the West End meeting. The West End Business Association had a Brownsfield Grant meeting to update the citizens. Uh, councillor Mead and myself attended. Billy, would you mind coming to the microphone and just giving a brief overview of what was presented at the, uh, meeting?
Madam Mayor, I'm the council. The reengagement meeting that we had the other night was to brief, uh, the city and the community on the next steps uh, in the grant application. Now that we have the Draper, we have Draper Aid and Associates under contract. The next step will be to identify and prioritize the site that the city believes needs assistance with abating or dealing with any environmental issues. Once we have that list of sites, then we will work with a consultant to, to engage with the property owners to determine their level of interest and commitment to the, to the program. If they are truly interested, then the consultant will do a phase one environmental, uh, looking at any sort of, uh, environmental issues, asbestos, uh, any leaking tanks, contaminated soils that they, um, that may be on the site. The next step is phase two, to devise a plan to assess and to deal with, uh, the abatement of those issues. Let me say that's the end of the task for these grant funds. Uh, it's simply giving the property owners sort of a, uh, uh, assistance, financial assistance to help them, uh, revitalize their site. So that's the end of, of the projects and tasks with this pool of money. The next step would be, one, the private sector owner would invest in, uh, abatement remediation of those environmental issues that are identified. Or the city at some point could apply for additional funds to assist the private landowners with that, with those issues. So.
I thank you.
Three year
Yeah.
project, so it's not something that's gonna happen overnight.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, the next item. Memorial Day. Memorial Day is coming up, so this weekend. Please remember to thank a vet for their service. Uh, so many of our men and women in the armed forces gave the ultimate sacrifice so we can, um, sit here today and live in a free country. So thank you to all the veterans out there for everything you have done and continue to do to make this country as wonderful as it is. My third item. Ms. Bow regard. What do you think? You think it's okay for me to?
Yep.
All right, Mr. Traer, Phil Traer. Phil will be moving on in a few weeks, and I just wanted to say that, uh, it has been such an honor to work with you and to have you here at City Hall. We, um, have trusted you with the city budget for several years, and you have been outstanding, and you have more than exceeded our expectations. So thank you for your service to the city, and you will be missed. But know that you are always welcome in the city of Stanton, so. All right, that takes me on to the next item, additional items by members of council. Are there any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Oaks.
Councillor Amy Darby.
Uh, just a reminder for council and, um, for the public, the VFW Post 2216, they are having a Memorial Day, um, celebration at Gypsy Hill Park. It's on May the 30th. Music begins at 9:30. Ceremony is at 10 o'clock. In case of rain, uh, the ceremony will be moved to the American Legion Post 13 on Cedar Green Road. So just wanted to remind everyone of that.
I appreciate the reminder, and in, if, in the, in the event you need to, um, call it a meeting, I will be in attendance at that.
As will I, so.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, um. I would first, um, like to say, um, I have to get this in with Phil and, um, cause I consider a Phil, Phil a friend. And I will admit that when I first heard that I was going to go upstairs and give him a hard time, but anyway, I've always said, um, with young people that I've worked with, and it's a pharmacy and everything, that I would never ever hold anybody back that was either trying to better themselves or it was putting family first. And that is what Phil is doing. Uh, he's putting family first. Um, his wife, uh, got a big promotion and Phil is moving back home up there to, to be with her at her new job, and so I have to admire that. And like I said, I'm going to miss him terribly, and I hope he knows that. The other thing that I'd like to do is, um, I will, I'm going to have the honor to announce uh, the names of the new Equity and Diversity Commission that all of us on the council, uh, agreed upon. And so it is my honor to announce these, and then we will. Yep, um, so Madam Mayor, I would like to formally nominate the following names for the new Equity and Diversity Commission. Lou Boden. Sabrina Burris. Joe Maria Garcia. Mark Jeter. Vicki Kaiser. Jake Krug. Lindsay Lennon. Beth Nelson. Onto Dwayne. Nathaniel Riddle. Daniel Stulsats. Jennifer Trappier. Susan Venable. And Xavier Willis.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
This is Carol and Dole. I'll second that.
Right, councillor Dole has second. Any further discussion?
I would like to make a comment.
Right, councillor Mead.
Uh, we had 35 very, uh, wonderful, passionate people apply to be on this commission. And I, I would say that, uh, that with, almost without exception, uh, any one of those 35 would have been, uh, excellent additions to the commission and would do excellent work for the commission. I'm sorry that we had to limit our selections to 14 people. Uh, but, but, uh, those who were interviewed and selected for the commission are all excellent people.
Any additional comments or? Take the vote first. Yeah, I, I would just like to say thank you to everyone that did apply. Uh, I too would have loved to have had each and every individual that applied to serve on this commission. We certainly appreciate the love and interest for the city of Stanton. With that, Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, wonderful. And at this time, Ms. Bow regard.
I would like to, we asked Dr. Robyn Stacia to join us briefly this evening. She has been tirelessly helping through this process. I can't give her enough credit for all the help she has provided to me and to us. And so, um, we are super excited to have this commission named. Um, I'm almost getting very emotional about it. It's been a lot of hard work, I know. We are planning now for the June 4th orientation with the commission, which we're very excited to be offering. So that's the next big step for this commission. Uh, Dr. Stacia, I would like to invite you to say a few words if you don't mind.
Well, thank you so much. Um, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I just, first of all, I want to say congratulations. This is really exciting. And it's exciting for many reasons. It is exciting because we had a process and the process worked. I was here with you when you decided that you would, um, own this process together, that you wouldn't allocate this to a smaller body of the city council, but you would do it together. You made decisions about the size of the council, and you increased this commission larger than most of your commission because you knew, and we agreed that we needed a larger number in order to achieve the kind of diversity that is necessary for this commission to be effective, and you did that. We set about a very steady process. Not necessarily smooth, but no process is smooth because we're learning as we go. But you end it strong. You end it with first mission that is even better than the U.S. Census diversity, okay? So this census has six who are people of color. It has eight individuals who are white. It has one individual who has a religious difference. It has individuals of every age range from 18 to 65, of every social economic background, of a diverse educational background, a diverse professional background, a diverse sexual orientation background, all of the things that we wanted. And these folks have stepped up. They have volunteered. You interviewed them using a non-biased scoring rubric that was so consistent that we knew who those individuals were. It was a brilliantly smooth, uh, executed process in the end. I'm excited for you. I'm excited to have been a part of helping to plan the process, and I'm excited about helping you to kick this off and coming to Stanton next weekend. So I look forward to meeting you all. Thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of this.
Thank you, Dr. Stacia, and I have to say, um, you were very valuable in this process, and we look forward to working with you in the future. So again, thank you for all of the efforts that you put into making this a reality. All right, are there any?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments by city council members?
Yes, I'd like to add, um, that on May 20th, Friday, May 20th, the Shenandoah Valley Partnership Economic Development Forum took place at Blue Ridge Community College. Uh, the first part of the update was, uh, was an update on Virginia ports and how competitive our ports are up and down the East Coast and how our ports are reimagining the systems by which, um, uh, freight is, uh, delivered, it both in imported and exported into our country. And, uh, and it, it was fascinating. It was absolutely fascinating update. We have an excellent port on the, on the East Coast of Virginia. It was also, uh, a significant portion of the update was, uh, was to talk about, um, workforce and affordable housing and the, and the, uh, very severe shortage we have. Uh, Carolyn Dole was also in attendance, and Carolyn, I think that it was stated that there were 3,100 unfilled manufacturing jobs in the Shenandoah Valley area. If you can imagine what 3,100 good paying manufacturing jobs, what the economic impact of that would be, then you, you can also imagine what the impact would be if those folks were able to find a place to live that they could afford to live in, in our area. So, uh, it was a, it was an excellent update, and, and I very much appreciated, uh, the work that the, that the, uh, the partnership did to, to present the information.
All right, thank you.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councillor Dole.
Yeah, so, uh, Ms. Mead covered the, uh, SVP Economic Development, uh, get together, and it was very, uh, helpful. And it's clear that there is a, still a, a lot of federal money out there, uh, available for competitive grants for transportation, infrastructure, pretty broad, uh, spectrum of, of, in those areas. So I think affordable housing could also fit in with that. And then I'd like to mention what a great time I had at the NAACP prayer breakfast on the 14th. It was probably one of the, they're always good, so, but it's hard to say, but I really liked the singer this year and the speaker. It was really, really inspiring. And, uh, Leslie Bowergard and I held down the city council table. We didn't get to eat any more than our, our plate, but it was still fun. And I'm looking forward to their, uh, they're having a Freedom, uh, banquet in the fall. I think it's October. And I want to say the 8th, but, uh, I'll get that definite date to you. Also, uh, after some years with COVID, uh, hanging around, I got to drive the Gypsy Express finally. I haven't done that in, uh, since COVID hit us and we had to close down, but I got to do that. And I'm happy to report the train was loaded with kids on every run the entire shift. We never, we had to keep them waiting in line, so they must have missed it too. Uh, and, and finally, well, the, the Memorial Day service, I'm a little confused because I, I had a flyer that there was a service in Gypsy Hill Park. At, um.
That's right, Karen.
Stonemaus Brigade Band is playing at 9:45. And the, and, um, the actual service is at 10.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay, just to clarify the, the times and everything. And finally, as a preacher's kid in this, in this time, these dreadful times, um, and they're coming so frequently now, Buffalo, uh, Uvalde, it's, it's becoming an almost weekly daily occurrence. And And there's a verse in Isaiah that I wanted to read because this is where I think some people should take stock of themselves. Isaiah one fifteen, "And when ye spread forth your hands, I will hide mine eyes from you. Yea, when ye make many prayers, I will not hear. Your hands are full of blood." That's it for me. Thanks.
All right. And Counselor Darby, can you reiterate where the rain gathering will be? If it happens to rain?
It says that in case of rain, move ceremony to American Legion Post thirteen on Cedar Green Road.
But otherwise, it's in the park. If it rains, it'll be moved to Cedar, Cedar Grove?
Cedar Green.
Cedar Green. Okay. All right. Thank you, Carolyn. That reminds me, the prayer breakfast, it was exceptionally special this year. The speaker they had was just phenomenal. I also forgot to mention that I did pick up trash in the West End, so I have to apologize to anyone that drove by and I was bending over picking up trash. So I'll go in and apologize for that now. But we've been very busy. The month of April and the month of May have been very busy for the city council. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to express any events they've attended. One last chance.
I just wanted to pay, I looked at the weather. Weather calling for eighty-six degree on high and a six percent chance of rain on Monday. So it sounds like clear sunny skies.
Perfect. All right, moving on to the next item, it's approval of minutes. The first approval is the special meeting minutes of May fourth, two thousand twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion.
This is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead.
I move to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Right. Vice Mayor Robertson has second. Any further discussion? In hearing none, Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to the second approval of minutes, which is the work session and regular meeting minutes of May twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
This is Brenda Mead again. I move to approve the work session, the minutes of the work session and regular meetings of May twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Right. There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
All right. Vice Mayor Robertson has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to the regular meeting. The first item is item A, a discussion, introduction, and public hearing of ordinance to amend the FY two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance for the city of Stanton by adding budget amendment number four. Ms. Bowregard.
I'll introduce the man of the hour.
Yes.
Mr. Phil Traer, our CFO, who will walk us through this item this evening.
Welcome.
It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure to have you here tonight. Thank you, Ms. Mead. It's a pleasure to be here. Wait for the slide. Well, actually, I can get started before the slide. Tonight, we are here to introduce budget amendment number four for FY two thousand twenty-two. Budget amendment number four captures donations, grant awards, insurance recoveries in our initial ARPA appropriation. Budget amendment number four totals two million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand and does require a public hearing, which is scheduled for this evening. The city portion of the budget amendment is two million six hundred ninety-nine thousand. The school portion is seventy-six thousand one forty. Details of budget amendment been summarized in a packet includes the following: sixty-one thousand one eighty-six in general fund appropriations, two million dollars in CIP funding with appropriations going to the ARPA funds going to the Emergency Radio Project, one hundred thousand dollars community development fund, five thousand four seventy-four for grant funds, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand for water funds, one hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred for sewer funds, sixty-four thousand eight six eight education funds, and eleven thousand two seventy-two. City manager recommends the introduction of budget amendment number four as presented. And again, we have a public hearing scheduled for this evening, which was properly advertised. We do have a few slides. We'll go to slide two, which is just a summary of what we just reviewed. Total budget amendment, two million seven seventy-five, city portion, two point seven, the school portion, seventy-six thousand. On slide three, we have a breakdown of the budget amendment into categories. On this slide, we outline insurance recoveries and donations totaling twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. The makeup includes six thousand eight hundred and ninety in insurance recoveries, thirty-two hundred dollars in donations for the libraries, and twenty-four hundred and twenty-five dollars for donations for parks and rec, primarily for the fishing tournament. Grant funds total forty-eight thousand six seventy-one includes police select enforcement of fifteen thousand three eighty, U.S. Marshals Task Force, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight, firehouse subs for computer equipment within the police department of twenty-five thousand three forty-nine, and the Susan Blighley Horticultural Grant for two thousand nine forty-four. Slide four, just a few items, the hundred thousand dollars for the community, the state community fund grant for the Arcadia Project. We have fifty-four hundred seventy-four for law enforcement block grant carryovers and two million dollars for the ARPA. Slide five, we have appropriations of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand and one hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred for water and sewer fund respectively. These funds are appropriations of the Virginia Community Readiness Grant secured by Mr. Vaughn earlier this year. In fact, Mr. Vaughn was quite busy earlier today working on additional twelve, ten to twelve million dollars with the stand with ten to twelve million dollars with the state. So we're going to keep our fingers crossed on that.
Good job, Bill.
Yeah, he's doing an excellent job. These funds will be used for the design expenses associated with utility service expansion into the eastern sector of the city up to Stanton Crossing. In the final slide, slide six, we have a summary of education-related appropriations of seventy-six thousand dollars. We have twenty-four thousand four oh five in donations, forty thousand four sixty-three in grants and insurance recoveries, and we have eleven thousand two seventy-two going to the cafeteria funds. And with that, I'll be happy to accept any questions that you may have before the public hearing.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Traer?
Yes, this is Carolyn Doll. Mr. Traer, I wonder if when you retire, you're going to come back to Stanton?
I may very well end up back in Stanton.
You could do worse.
Oh, I could do much worse, you know, because I love Stanton. I absolutely do. I mean, if I don't end up on a Carolina beach, I will be back here in Stanton. And the chances of being on a Carolina beach are probably slim. So in five or six years, I will be walking the streets again. And you all will be seeing me periodically between now and then, I can assure you, so.
All right.
All right. Any other additional questions or comments? Right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Carolyn Doll. I'm going to introduce an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget by adding budget amendment number four totaling two million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and that council conduct a public hearing of the ordinance.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Counselor Mead is second. Any further discussion? In hearing none, Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. And with that, that takes us to the public hearing. I have to read this statement that Mr. Blair has typed up for me. Public hearing. In a moment, I will open the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during the public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during the council meeting for other public hearings and matters from the public. And please keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. So if you wish to speak, please approach the podium, and we will alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. So again, if you would like to speak concerning this matter under the public hearing, after I've banged the gavel, feel free to come to the microphone, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes to speak. And we'll alternate between the audience in person and the participants on Zoom. With that, the public hearing is now officially open. Would anyone like to address the council concerning this matter? Mr. Kessiker, does anyone have their hand raised in Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Fossa, Mr. Fossa, did you want to speak? We were worried about you. We haven't seen you in a while. I was going to have a well check on you.
Yes, I haven't been here for a while. I'm kind of rusty.
All right, we'll go ahead.
Okay, but I want you to understand some things. This is about the budget, right? Okay. The budget is fine, for the most part. However, with all of the massacres that have been occurring in Connecticut, Colorado, Texas, Florida, California, and so forth, I stopped and asked a patrolman here on duty about some of the things that go on. And I'm not quite sure I agree with everything he said. I would like to see some money instituted in the budget that protects the children. Now, the courts have these metal detectors to protect the judges. And I keep asking myself, well, what is more valuable? The judges or the children? And I think it's time now with all of these things that are happening. And Virginia has, for the most part, been free of all of these things. I think in your budget, you should include some metal detection devices in all of these schools. Because how that fellow ever got into that school down in Texas is incredible. How the police responded is disgusting, terrible, out of order. They waited outside while he's shooting the kids inside. It's terrible, terrible. And there should be something more that has to be done with respect to these schools' protections. I'm just thankful my children are not going to school in Texas or California or Connecticut. But I'm saying to you, there needs to be more protection. Also, now I shouldn't say something, maybe there should be monies put out for another retreat in that budget. Not only that, Judge Ludwig, Judge Ludwig should be invited to give a speech on intense integrity. Because there seems to still be a lot of animosity that goes on within this council, and it's got to stop. I got job specs from the town manager, and I see nothing in the job specs that should produce so much animosity. There seems to be either personal individual problems, and I'm sure Judge Ludwig could straighten out a lot of things. You need to do things that are best for the citizens of the community, okay? I hope you all understand. I'll be back again shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Fossa. Does anyone have their, does anyone have their hand raised?
No, ma'am.
All right, one last chance. Anyone from the audience? With that, the public hearing is now closed. All right, that takes us on to item B, a presentation of the quarterly financial report. Ms. Bowregard.
Mr. Traer is with us again.
Welcome back.
Madam Mayor, Madam Council, it's a pleasure to be back again. Tonight, we're here to report on the third quarter unaudited postings and revenue and expenditures for FY two thousand twenty-two. Year-to-date revenues posted through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two totaled thirty-six point four million or forty-six point eight percent of the annual appropriation. In FY twenty-one through the third quarter, posted revenues were thirty-nine point six or fifty-nine point eight percent of the annual appropriation. The year-on-year variance through March equals a negative three point three million dollars, and it's made up of four point three million dollars in one-time CARES funding, which was recorded in the first half of FY two thousand twenty-one. As a note, although we've received six million dollars in ARPA funds, these monies remain in the balance sheet subject to appropriation via council's recommendation. We also have a negative variance of one point two million dollars in the payments in lieu of taxes. This is a timing issue, and the journal entry will be entered in the coming weeks to record this. These two items are partially offset by year-on-year increases in property taxes and local taxes of two point one million dollars. Local taxes of interest include sales tax, up three hundred thousand dollars over same time last year, and that's projected to be six hundred and seventy two thousand dollars above budget projections. Meal tax through March, up seven hundred and seventy-three thousand over same time last year, projected to finish one million dollars ahead of budget projections. Lodging revenues through March, up three hundred and forty-five thousand over same time last year, and projected to finish three hundred thousand dollars over budget projections. All in all, we are pacing at roughly three million plus above budget projections. On the expense side, we have posted forty-five point nine million of expenditures and encumbrances or sixty-two point two percent of the annual appropriation. From a percentage basis, this is slightly lower than what we've experienced over the last couple of years, but not significantly out of line. FY twenty-one's same time last year, third quarter expenditures equal sixty-six point five percent of the appropriation. In two thousand twenty, solid percentage of sixty-five point five. Year-on-year expense variance is down two point seven million dollars, which is entirely driven by the internal transfers between CIP, debt service, and education funds. Excluding the impact of these transfers, operational expenditures are up one point six million dollars and is largely driven by the timing of the annual street paving encumbrances. In the area of general government expenses, we posted an overall decrease of fifty-two thousand. Judicial admin is up two hundred and thirty-four thousand as compared to the same time last year, being driven by encumbrance carryover as well as salary and related benefits within the sheriff and Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Public safety, year-on-year expenses are up twelve thousand versus same time last year. Public Works is up two point three, of which two point one four million is associated with street maintenance and paving-related expenditures in the Berkeley Place wall repair. Public Health is down seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. This is a timing of the third quarter billing. Parks, Recreation, Library, and Cultural is up five hundred and fifty-six thousand over same time last year. This is primarily due to salaries and related expenditures in Parks and Recreation, as well as the library, as these two departments have opened up this year for more normal operations, and we're operating on a limited basis for most of twenty-one. And finally, in the area of planning and community development, we posted a decrease of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in expenditures, which is entirely driven by FY two thousand twenty-one CARES Act funding of five hundred thousand dollars for support of local businesses, as well as three hundred thousand dollars for community housing support, which was also recorded in the second quarter of two thousand twenty-one. In my last golf report, the third quarter year-to-date golf that is my witness, I'll never be clubbed again. Anyhow, third quarter year-to-date golf revenues in FY two thousand twenty-two finished at one hundred and sixty-four thousand compared to twenty-twenty-one's one hundred and twenty-seven thousand. We had seven thousand four hundred and thirteen rounds of golf posted in two thousand twenty-two compared to seven thousand five twenty and twenty-one. Membership count equals one hundred and forty, with eleven of those members associated with the Riverhead High School golf team. In two thousand twenty-one, we had fifteen members reported, which included eight members of the Riverhead High School golf team. On the expense side, we finished at with eighty thousand two fifty-three in operating expenditures compared to sixty-five, five eighty-one and twenty-one for a variance of fourteen thousand six seventy-two. The variance is comprised of advertising of seventeen hundred dollars, professional services, thirty-two fifty. This is the first tee expense. Tree care of sixty-one forty-five and collection fees of twenty-two hundred dollars. Maintenance allocations have been updated to reflect the most recent allocation report as we recently received FY two thousand twenty-one's allocation report. As a result, the allocation has been raised from two hundred and ninety-two thousand to three hundred and forty thousand. Net loss for FY two thousand twenty-two year-to-date equals two oh four two two nine versus one eighty-six nine eighty-three in two thousand twenty-one. And with that, I will be happy to field any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Traer?
Mr. Traer?
Yes, ma'am.
Have we got that fire truck on the market yet?
No, ma'am. We do not have that fire truck on the market. And you're referring We do not have that fire truck on the market, and you're referring to the old ladder truck.
I am.
We will, we will reach out to Chief Carver, and I'm sure we'll, we'll have that on, on Doug deals very soon, so.
And the other, see, there was another item I had a question about, and maybe Mr. Vaughn can help with this one. I see that economic development still has almost $1 million in its available budget with only 25% of your revenues or your expenditures on the books. Is that a, surely that isn't because you've saved so, so much money?
There is no way that I have a million dollars in my budget.
Well, I'm looking at it.
Well, perhaps you do, and with the economic development agreements that, that are traditionally booked right at the end of the year, so.
Okay, thank you, that explains that, yeah.
Yes.
Right. Any additional questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Treyer. Takes us to the next item, which is item C, a consideration of revision of financial management policy fund balance reserve policy. Ms. Bow regard.
And for the very last time, I will say that Mr. Treyer is here to present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we are here to formally update our fund balance policy, raising it from 15% to 16.5% for the subsequent year adopted budget. The fund balance reserve, or safety net reserve, is considered to be a committed fund, which means these funds can only be used for specific purposes pursuant to constraints imposed by city council. Formal action may be taken by council to utilize these funds, and this includes the adoption of the annual city budget or adoption of budget amendment during the course of the operating year. Per policy, the financial circumstances allowing the use of the safety net reserve by city council include, one, unanticipated expenses exceeding $100,000 from natural disasters resulting from storm damage, unseen infrastructure damage for water and sewer systems, bridge repair, and other infrastructure; two, the imposition of mandates by federal or state governments, and such as water, sewer, landfill regulations, including construction of courts and jail facilities that exceed $100,000; three, court decisions resulting in unbudgeted expenditures in excess of $100,000; and finally, acts of terrorism against the city destroying city's infrastructure or causing financial hardship to provide services to citizens in excess of $100,000. Again, this is the, safety net reserve will be available for appropriation, but it's not to be used for general economic slowdown or recession. Per policy, the city shall adjust its revenue and expenditures according to the economic conditions. In the event the safety net reserve is tapped into, per policy, the city is to restore the funds back to the 16.5 level within 36 months. The calculated fund balance will rise. We, we raised it half a point at the end of 2019, but we didn't take a formal vote on that. The formal vote normally comes up at the end of the year in May, sort of as a cleanup item. We had COVID hit in 2020, so we didn't take a formal vote, so I guess officially we're at 15%, but raising it from 15.5% to 16.5% would, would, would mean it would rise at the end of 2022, $10,104 to $10,756, or difference of 651,929. Finally, per policy, fund balance reserves are required for all major funds, which include the general fund, water fund, sewer fund, environmental fund, and stormwater fund, and the city manager has reviewed these changes and recommends approval as presented.
Are there any questions for Mr. Treyer?
This is Carolyn Dull.
Ms. Dull.
Mr. Treyer, I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you, you too, ma'am.
Because from one CPA to another, I can appreciate all the work that you've done better than, than people whose eyes glaze over at the, at the numbers. But anyway, with that, I would like to move the council approve the revised financial management policy for the fund balance/reserve policy, increasing the safety net reserve amount to 16.5% effective June 30, 2022.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Mead has seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Dull?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Treyer.
One last time.
Mr. Treyer has exited the building. Not really, you have to be here tomorrow morning. All right, that takes us to the next item, which is item D, update on the Stanton Crossing economic development efforts. Ms. Bow regard.
Mr. Billy Vaughn will walk us through this item tonight.
Welcome back, Mr. Vaughn.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight.
Oh, you look like you're so happy.
Channeling, Mr. Treyer. Madam Mayor, members of council, have wonderful news for you tonight. Our plan for Stanton Crossing is coming together. The demolition is about 99, approximately 99% complete. Mr. Trey would say 99.1234, but it's about 99% complete. All 19 buildings are down, all the tanks have been properly removed. The only thing we have left, all the foundations have been properly compacted, filled and compacted, seeded. The only thing that we truly have left is our clerk of the works, John Keane, who's done an excellent job keeping an eye on the contractor this year. He's doing the volume of paperwork that's necessary to make sure we have a site that's can be labeled as a clean site, that there are no more environmental issues, no issues at all. So when we go to sell the property, yeah, there won't be any issues. So the demolition is complete. It was a $2.4 million project, thanks to, of course, council approving the funds, but Mr. Treyer cobbling together those funds to make that work. $432,000 of it came from the state to deal with the environmental issues, but the demolition is done. The next couple of items, I'll just quickly go, go through them. It deals with support by the state, the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program. Now, we received $850,000. That was to help move Stanton Crossing closer to a tier four site. We're currently under contract with three consultants. There are six major tasks that they'll have to do, and we'll need to complete those tasks by September, October of this year, which hopefully will open the door for us to apply for another $10 to $12 million for infrastructure installation.
Wonderful.
Along with that, the state, again, the Virginia Economic Developers Development Partnership, showing their support for Stanton Crossing, we gave a site tour to the new Vice President of Real Estate Solutions. This individual is responsible for having input on who receives additional grant funding to help move sites from a tier two or three to tier four or tier five. This was his first time on the site of Stanton Crossing, but we spent two or three hours, we met out there, did a presentation, and then gave him a tour of the site, and he was very impressed with the success and the commitment on the part of the city and the EDA to make the necessary site preparations at Stanton Crossing. Following that, that site, Stanton Crossing, was selected to the, this new sector pilot program that the EDP has in place. That program, which new, and we were the first site in the state to go through it, that happened today. We did a virtual tour with a global company called KPMG, and they're one of the top companies in, in the world for helping localities and state with site evaluation and site selection. And so we spent about an hour or two on a virtual meeting with them today, going through, explaining past efforts at Stanton Crossing, talking about our business plan. We had Tim Davies with Timmins, who's been instrumental in helping us move through this whole process. But at the end of the hour-long evaluation, they were very impressed, again, with what has happened. They realized that Stanton Crossing will be one of the top sites along the Idi One corridor when completed. Along with that, the crossingway extension, which is the road that would, VDOT road, that would connect the roundabout on the front part of the property to Valley Center Drive on the rear part, that project was advertised April the 26th. The bid openings were today. I have not heard which, you know, how many contractors responded to the bid. The project award and contract execution is scheduled to be completed by July the 10th, and the actual construction of the project will commence sometime before August the 22nd of this year. So, and they're looking at a May 2024 completion date. So we'll have that spine road, it's about 4,000 linear feet, with 100 space parking ride, the bright bus system will have a shelter there, and we'll have charging stations there as well. So that's all part of the project. And so that next step, that marketing plan, now that we have a, a site that's marketable, the draft plan is scheduled, scheduled to be presented to the EDA and council June 23rd. So hopefully, we'll get on the agenda of council, and we'll send out copies of the draft plan, of course, prior to, probably a week or so prior to that meeting. So, any questions?
It all sounds great. Any questions? Vice Mayor Robertson?
I hope not, not bring anything up bad, but was there ever any, has there been an agreement as far as with the, the companies tearing things down that they ran over? I mean, since, you know, as far as, has it been up underneath the rug, or has it been, there's been a price reach?
We've, we've dealt with, we've dealt with that, and the compromise that was presented to them, they accepted. There were some issues that had, had to be dealt with regarding the timing, but they were willing to promise that they would be finished by July 1, and here we are before June 1. They're complete, and so that reduced the liquidated damages that they were responsible for, because they went over the deadline. But everyone is in agreement, everyone is happy. All right.
Any additional questions or comments? Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us to the next item, which is item E, a consideration of resolution approving city council meeting schedule for the remainder of 2022. Ms. Bow regard.
Mr. John Blair will handle this item this evening.
And welcome, Mr. Blair.
Thank you, Mayor Oaks and City Council. As we discussed at the work session, this council's organizational meeting on July 1st, 2020, you adopted a schedule. Of course, the state law has changed since the adoption of that schedule, so all of your terms were extended for six months. However, your schedule that you adopted July 1st of 2020 only ran through June 30th of this year. Since your terms have all been extended six months, and the organizational meeting will not begin until, will not be conducted until January 1st of 2023, council therefore needs to adopt a resolution establishing your meeting schedule for July through December of this year. The resolution before you has one meeting scheduled for the months of July and August. Those meetings will occur on the fourth Thursday of months, and the schedule before you has one meeting scheduled for November and December of this year, and those meetings are scheduled to occur on the second Tuesday, or on the second Thursday of those respective months. Otherwise, the months of September and October will have two meetings each, and I am happy to take any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Blair? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that council adopt the proposed resolution establishing a meeting schedule for July 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I second that.
And Councilor Darby has seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Dull?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to the next item, which is item F, a consideration of ordinance to transition the mayoral and vice mayoral elections to January. Ms. Bow regard.
Mr. Blair will also handle this item.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much. It's been a while. As discussed in the work session, and just in, in our previous item, again, the state changed the law for municipalities which may no longer be allowed to conduct elections in May. Previously, the Stanton City Council elections were in May, and your organizational meeting was conducted in July. Given that the state law now mandates November elections, the organizational meeting will need to occur in January. The ordinance before you simply moves the organizational meeting from July to January, and that is when the mayor and vice mayor are elected, as well as when you set your meeting schedule.
Right, are there any questions for Mr. Blair? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks, I move that the council adopt the proposed amendments to Stanton City Code Section 2.10.020 as presented.
There's a motion on the floor by Councilor Darby, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Councilor Mead, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Dull?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. And that takes us to item G, a discussion and consideration of the liaison for the Equity and Diversity Commission. Ms. Bow regard.
This was added by Vice Mayor Robertson, excuse me, I had to, so I will allow him to address this issue.
Yeah, I, after everything was done and thought about, and I brought this forward simply to bring up the thing with my, my count, my colleague, I think it's best that we simply replace Ms. Mead with the mayor at this time, because she spoke up and said there would be, you know, she would be willing to do that. And the only reason that, this time that I'm thinking about it, is that it makes the most sense, is because it, as far as consistency, you know, you, in a few months, are going to be leaving the council, and, you know, this is our biggest, and one of our most important commissions that we're forming, and as far as consistency, it just makes the most sense is that we put a person on that will be from the beginning to the end of this, because we're looking at 18 months or longer before this commission will be done with its work, and then to present their work to the council at that time. And it just makes sense that, you know, if you're going to be on for a few more months, whatever, and then in middle of the stream, now we, we have to get a new commission, a new liaison. So that's the reason I'm doing it. It just makes, to me, it makes the most sense. So I would, you know, make the motion that we consider the replacement of Counselor Mead as liaison to the new Diversity and Equity Commission, and replace Ms. Mead with the mayor Andrea Oaks to that commission as liaison.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second that.
There's a second, any further discussion?
Carolyn Dull.
Councilor Dull.
I would like to consider, I'd like to amend the, the current motion to allow the commission members to. commission members to vote amongst themselves and let us know which council member they would like as their liaison.
Okay, we have a motion and that's also been second on the floor, so we'll need to take action.
Well, no, first, if, if Ms. Dole is making a amendment to the motion, Ms. Dole's amendment would need a second, and then there would be discussion on the amendment.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. There's a second. Any further discussion?
And this is Carolyn Dole, just to clarify, it makes sense to me that this group, as part of their orientation, as part of the process of them becoming a group, it makes sense to me that they would be able to select the council member that they would prefer to have as their liaison.
Right. Any further discussion? Councilor Darby.
I have, I have question maybe for Mr. Blair, but, you know, we, we, in the resolution that we set up for this at the beginning, we stated we wanted all of council to be involved in the whole process, and that's what we've done so far. So is there any way moving forward with the commission that instead of having one liaison, I mean, we're all allowed to, up to three of us can attend any meeting at a time. So is there any way that instead of having one liaison, we just all participate?
Well.
I mean, I heard Dr., excuse me, one second, I heard Dr. Stacia speak highly of how she thought that was such a positive experience from the, from the beginning. So that's part of what got me thinking about that.
Well, first of all, it's worth, to answer your question, I, I think it's worth pointing out, boards and commissions per state law are not required to have a council liaison. However, you in the city of Stanton, you do have many council liaisons. Now, I think the purpose of the liaison is found in your procedural memorandum. And, you know, in, in colloquial terms, what the liaison real, the liaison's function really is, is to work with the commissioner board and make sure that if they need something from council, the liaison communicates that to the council. Also, the liaison can communicate to the council if, if they see any particular issues with the board or commission that need to be addressed in terms of funding, staffing, things of that nature. To your point about, could you have a rotating liaison? I, I suppose, yes, you could, in which basically all seven members of council, one goes to the commission meetings every month, and you just rotate it through until their work is completed to December of, in December of 2023. That's an option if the council wanted to just have a rotating liaison in which all seven counselors, one went every month. It is also important, as Councilor Darby notes, and, and this is a very important commission. And my guess is that unlike some of your boards and commissions, this is going to receive attendance from more than one counselor at a time. And, and again, the, the point of a liaison is typically taking the temperature of the commissioner, the board, and reporting back to council again if there are funding issues, if there are issues that council needs to address regarding the commission. But my guess is more than one of you will probably be at most of these meetings initially and will be able to, to take that temperature. But, you know, again, this is your decision as a council. You can appoint one person right now. Ms. Dole's amendment says, why don't we ask the commission for their recommendation? Of course, their recommendation isn't binding. Or Ms. Darby, your proposal that in fa, in effect, one counselor would just attend on a rotating basis, the meetings, which again is, is, I, I just colloquially refer to that as a rotating liaison. But right now, it's important to note the amendment on the floor is from Ms. Dole.
So I will have to say that other boards and commissions do not choose who their liaison is. And I feel that we need to show continuity and therefore go ahead and have the council choose the liaison, because it's not chosen by other boards and commissions on who all gets to represent that particular commission or board by the city council.
Mrs. Carolyn Dole, I, I, I need to add something to the reasoning here. First of all, other boards and commissions are selected by the council as a whole. So there, there's no continuity that we need to get with this particular commission, because it was created differently than the others. But more importantly, I cannot forget the words that were spoken at the last meeting about you, mayor, saying you'd lost trust in Ms. Me and, as well as Vice Mayor Robertson. So to me, this looks like we just want to punish Ms. Me. We just want to punish her and we're going to take her out of that position. And to me, that's petty and, and it's not a good look. And those are the words that you said.
Okay. Councilor Dole, there was a lack of trust because of confidential information that was provided to the newspaper. And unfortunately, we did have some participants that chose not to be a part of the process as a result. So.
You didn't give me any of that information.
So, the, the, it was in the paper. Unfortunately, that.
I didn't see anybody, I didn't, I did not hear anybody that applied that withdrew because of that.
There was interest that was no longer there as a result.
Well, you did not inform me, but that's nothing new about that. I am saying you, the appearance to me, and you cannot take this away and you cannot smooth, try to smooze your talk to make it sound like you're so wonderful. You want, this looks like you want to punish Ms. Me, and I think it's a bad look for you. And I'm trying to give you good advice. And by using an alternative and letting the commission choose their own liaison, you can avoid looking like you want to just punish somebody because they made you unhappy.
Counselor Dole.
The information that she shared was not confidential. It was demographic information.
Was.
And that's how Mr. Blair confirmed whether or not that was confidential, because no one, he's never told me that was confidential information.
The FOIA commission, if you want to comment on that, Mr. Blair.
The information, and again, I don't know, first of all, I don't know what or who, if of anything was shared with the newspaper. It's first and foremost. And in terms of information that was printed in the newspaper, what I will say is that it appeared to me to be demographic information. There's a difference in terms of FOIA, and the FOIA council says just purely demographic information that can't identify individuals is not protected as a personnel record. If the demographic information can identify in particular individuals, that is personnel information. But I don't know what was shared, and I don't feel comfortable making any conclusion at this time.
All right. That's fair enough.
I don't, and I'm not going to assume or, or in any way make a conclusion as to who shared the inform, I, I.
Well, the newspaper had indicated it was Councilor Mead. So essentially, Councilor Dole, I want to serve because I want to be a part of making Stanton a better place to live. My intention is to help this commission to be able to build it up and to help, again, their service to the city to be the best that it can be. And unfortunately, there was a lack of trust. No matter what the reasoning may be, unfortunately, the lack of trust still exists. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
I'm sorry. I have not had an opportunity to speak, and I believe.
Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I've been passionate about this commission for two years. As this commission was being formed, as we were looking for folks to apply to the commission, I reached out to the community multiple times to seek people who would be interested in providing, volunteering, providing their, you know, the passion that they had for, for the principles of this commission. I spent a great deal of time doing that. I checked with our, with Ms. Bowery-Gard and Ms. Bixler on a frequent basis to find out how many people we had, had applied for the commission. When it was 22, I went back out to the community again, and I said, we need more applicants, because I wanted to make sure that we had the kind of diversity, that we had the voices on this commission that we needed to have in order to provide the information to city council that they needed to have. And so from 22 to 35, we ended up with 35. And I spent a great deal of time and put a lot of effort into making sure we had plenty of folks on that commission. And at that city council meeting, when I disclosed, and to the newspaper, when I disclosed those demographics, I did not disclose personal information about one single person. I did not do that. And I did that intentionally. But I came to this city council on April 28th, and I asked for a closed session so that we could discuss my concerns about, about gaps in the commission and in the voices that we need to have on that commission. And this council voted me down. They did not want to have that conversation with me. And so I felt it was appropriate to make my numbers, the demographics of this commission, public at the state that it wasn't. As a direct result of my, my disclosing this information, we expanded the process to include additional voices in the community. And we got a result that Dr. Stacia has praised to the rafters as being the, the kind of commission that would represent our community. And so I'm going to ask you all to listen to your better angels and acknowledge the effort that I have put forth and the passion and the commitment that I have had for this commission over the last two years and vote accordingly.
I would like to state that this was an effort by all of the council. We've all worked very hard on this. It was a blind process that was conducted by city staff, in particular, the interim city manager, and she did an excellent job protecting the integrity of the information. Unfortunately, the information concerning the candidates were provided to the paper, names marked out. However, these were considered personnel records in the sense that they had special class questions on them. And it was brought up at that meeting, Councilor Mead, that you mentioned, you brought up sensitive information that should not have been disclosed in an open setting. So therefore, that ended up causing a lack of trust.
Mr. Blair just stated that he was not comfortable making that decision. And you are not qualified, you are not qualified to interpret FOIA.
I am not sure that Mr. Blair has seen it. Either way, unfortunately, during the meeting itself, you gave out information that should not have been provided.
No names.
Either way, no matter what the excuse.
Strictly demographic. I had, how many, I, I, I had, I disclosed information about groups of people that had come together that, and, and voices that we needed to have in the community. We were missing some of those voices.
It was a blind process.
And the only way, no, it was not a blind.
It was a blind process.
You had, you had all of that demographic information.
It was a blind process, and the staff did an excellent job.
Okay, folks, I've said all I'm going to say.
Madam Mayor.
And I will look to you as a community.
I will be voting against Carolyn Dole's motion.
Well, Mayor Oaks, I want to make an amended motion to Ms. Dole's motion.
Well.
How do I do that? Because I have another thought, and I think that if Ms. Mead wants to be on there and, and Ms. Mayor Oaks wants to be on there, put them both on there. Put them both on there.
I, I will be at every single meeting regardless. I will be at every single meeting of the commission regardless. And I end my term on city council on December 31st, and I will continue to be at every single meeting of this commission until it wraps up its work. That is my commitment.
And everyone on this council is committed, and we were committed through the whole process. Vice Mayor Robertson.
I, my, my saying was, and I will personally thank you for your, your work that you did to bring everything up, but that still doesn't belie the fact that we talked about, that, that I wanted consistency on it, you know, that you be a member, the reports back to the council, you know, for the entire 18 months that this is going to run. That, that was just my thought. And I, you know, I fully thank you for everything you've done. You have been, from the very beginning, you have been pushing it. And I thank you for that personally, and I'll put it out there for everybody to hear. But it still doesn't belie the fact that you will be leaving this council in a short order, and that we need to have somebody on a consistent basis that will be a member of this council. And that's the reason, that's my thought process.
And I appreciate the, the notion of consistency. We regularly reassign council liaisons to planning commissions, for instance, the Economic Development Authority. We do that every time there's a reorganization.
Absolutely. But this is, but not on this, this level of importance.
This commission is important to me. And so I'm going to go back and ask you again not to do this.
All right. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
And.
Would you repeat the motion?
Before we do this.
Okay.
I think it's important, because Ms. Darby asked a question. I think, Ms. Darby, your motion, or, or your proposed amendment, I think it's not congruent with what Ms. Dole has proposed. She has proposed that, in fact, this amendment you're about to vote on, that the commission make a recommendation at council for who the liaison is. I think the appropriate process would be to vote on this amendment. Depending on the outcome of that amendment, then, Ms. Darby, if you want to make a formal amendment, you can.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Would you please repeat the motion?
Amendment.
Amendment.
Can you pull it up?
Is it?
I believe it, it basically was let the commission members pick.
Yes.
The, their choice for being liaison commission. And, and can I say something else for that? I mean, I, or maybe I shouldn't, maybe it's out of, be out of order.
Can you?
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
No.
Mayor Oaks.
No.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay.
Mayor Oaks, I would like to make a, a motion that both you, Mayor Oaks, and Councilor Mead be the liaison for this Equity and Diversity Commission.
And that is in the form of an amendment, a proposed amendment to Vice Mayor Robertson's motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. My concern with that goes back to the lack of trust that the commission has established. So I'll be voting.
This is Carolyn Dole. I'd like to add a comment to this particular discussion. It is a matter of lack of trust. I don't trust you to be on that commission, because I don't have any trust in what, what you say is being truthful ever.
And you have a right to vote.
That's right. So I, I'm just. So I, I'm just saying it is a lack of trust.
And I, I, I want to have, I have a comment to make. The reason that I'm making this motion is because I think that, you know, if there's, obviously, the trust that you've expressed, the trust issue you expressed with Ms. Mead, Ms. Marie, Ms. Mead's willingness and, and the interest that she's put in so far on this committee. I mean, this to me, you know, for six months, both of you be on there and see what you can accomplish, if anything. I just don't see why we're sitting here continuing to fight about this.
The council, the council.
Because we need to punish Ms. Mead.
No. The council had, the majority of the council had expressed an interest in a lack of trust at a previous meeting.
Let's, yeah, let's just.
Okay.
Let's just try to come to.
Any other, all right. Mr. Kesseler, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Ah. I will vote yea.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
No.
Mayor Oaks.
No.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And with that, that takes us to matters from the interim city manager, Ms. Beauregard.
That's the, that's the amendment.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, that's the amendment. Well, we, it's passed, so the other one dies.
Right. That the amendment to the motion now becomes the main motion. There does have to be another vote.
All right, thank you for the point of clarification. I'm so confused. All right, so.
So I think now somebody needs to make a motion to adopt the amended motion.
Amy, why don't you make that?
I make a motion that we adopt the amended motion that we just voted on for Ms. Mead and Councilor Mead and Mayor Oaks to be on this, the liaisons to this Equity and Diversity Commission.
There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? I'll be voting against this motion. Mr. Kesseler, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
No.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
No.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, are we good?
Yes.
All right. That takes us to matters from the interim city manager, Ms. Beauregard.
I have a few items this evening. The first one is that the City of Stanton Department of Parks and Recreation is marking 50 years of serving the community this year. And to celebrate, we are hosting two events this summer. The first is Saturday, June 18th, at Gypsy Hill Park, which will include a pool party, Kona ice, train rides, and the movie Encanto. The second is the Montgomery Hall Park, Saturday, August 13th, and will feature a picnic with hot dogs and hamburgers, pool party, Kona ice, and a movie, and the movie Finding Dory. You can check the Parks and Recreation webpage for additional details. The second item is that the City of Stanton is pleased to announce that our utility customers can sign up for automatic bank draft, for an automatic bank draft to have funds electronically drafted from their bank account on the due date to pay for their utility bills. This method guarantees timely payment and eliminates the possibility of penalties and service disruptions due to non-payment. There is no charge for customers for this service. The customer will still receive their bill as normal and they will have the option to opt out of the auto draft anytime before the due date. We will soon get the word out about this through our bill messages, website, and social media. The next item is that Stanton Police Department's K-9 team of Officer Jessica Owens and Wilson recently won three awards from the Virginia Police K-9 Association. The awards are for 2021 Narcotics Case of the Year, 2021 Tracking Case of the Year, and 2021 Article Search Case of the Year. So congratulations to them. And if folks are looking for some live music starting this weekend, Summer Stage at Blackburn Inn kicks off this Friday with Hyffit's Kickoff Hoot Nanny. And Stanton Jams is all day Saturday and all over downtown. Finally, the city's YouTube channel is up to date with all of the audio recordings of city council meetings. Special shout out to Morgan Smith in our office for making this possible. She worked really hard to get this done. We are now caught up and back on track. So I truly appreciate all the work she put into this.
That's excellent.
So thank you. That's all I have for this evening.
All right, well, thank you. That takes us to the next item, which is matters from the public. And I have another statement here to read from Mr. Blair. This part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online at the City of Stanton's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. So what we're going to do is we're going to start with the folks in the audience. You'll be able to come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes to speak. And then we'll go to the folks that have their hands raised in Zoom and we'll alternate between the two. So. So with that, the Matters from the Public is now open. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, council. I am Ms. Crawford and I do reside in the City of Stanton. I stand before you just to share what I have witnessed tonight. And there's only one word that comes to mind: embarrassment. I sat back there and I watched council and one is missing, bicker at each other for absolutely no reason, really. It seems as if you can't agree to one thing versus the other. It seems that there's some tension between one member to the next. And personally for me, I'm embarrassed to not only call you my mayor, but to look in front of me and say that this is my council. It's embarrassing. And if you can't agree to disagree, then you should simply remove yourself from the project in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kesseler, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. Would anyone else from the audience? Mr. Fassa. Welcome back.
Couple of things. First of all, you have a new partial manager. You're spending money looking for another manager. If she's doing the job and not doing any finaling with you people, then she should be made the permanent manager and stop looking for more problems. That's the first thing. Give her the job. I don't know her. Maybe she can give me a history of, a background. Secondly, you're starting a new commission. You've appointed a lot of people to the commission. I don't know one single purpose, person on that commission. And I should. I should have a background about their history, what they vote for, what they didn't vote for, where they served, what they didn't serve, and so. How are they going to serve? And then what are the jobs, prospects of these people on this commission? What kind of authority will they have? Your problems are just starting with this new commission. Will they be able to overrule the Real Estate Assessment Board? Will they be able to overrule the Planning Board? What kind of authority will they have? Will they overrule you people? What kind of authority will they have? You're just starting. You're opening up a big, big can of worms, believe me. A big can of worms. And then this business about trust. You, you were all elected by the people to, by government of the people, by the people, and for the people. You have to trust them, whether you like it or don't like it. You have to put your personal differences aside and say to them, "I have to trust you. I have to trust you to do the right thing." You all have one purpose in mind: Government of the people, by the people, and for the people. I don't think some of it has happened. I think with respect to assessments, they were way, way out of order. Way out of order. Okay? There are people who can't afford housing here in Stanton with the new assessments. And there are, I noticed there are a lot of houses for sale, many more than what they were before. People have invested money into these houses and now they're trying to sell them and get out. Get out. Why? Because the assessments have overruled them. You know, you got to stop and you got to start thinking a little bit beyond your noses. I have a big nose and my problem is it's a big nose and it thinks beyond my nose. Okay? So I, I have to tell you, you have to do something about it. You can't just, you have to have integrity. You have to know the difference between what's right and what's wrong and do the right thing. You can't keep fighting each other. There's too much animosity here. When your next time you have a retreat, have Judge Ludwig give a talk on integrity. He gave it to the wrong people many years ago. But maybe he can do something to pull you all together. You never know. But he's a, he has integrity. Okay? And then there's, let's see. Oh, yeah. I had a long conversation, over an hour of conversation, with the head of the Real Estate Department. Each of you should be a liaison to each department in this city. You should be able to attend the meetings and find out what the heck is going on in their department. They come to you and they only tell you the good things. They're not going to tell you anything. I'm sure you should be able to understand some bad things and try to straighten them out because I'm sure they have, they do bad things. This, this business of assessments, you're just driving people out of here. People who can't afford the houses anymore. This is not Charlottesville. You've, you, you know, you've dropped up the assessment. You have plenty of money now. Spend it. Spend it reasonably and appropriately. No shenanigans. If you're honest and you're trustworthy, there should be no problems. It's when you're dishonest and not trustworthy that a lot of this stuff goes on. I lived in a city at one time where there was a lot of corruption and discrimination. Well, I'm finished. You all have a good day. And I never get a reaction from you people.
Thank you, Mr. Fassa.
Some one of you told me that there was.
All right. Mr. Kesseler, does anyone have their?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Caller.
Speak, you people.
You can.
Don't be bashful.
Caller, if you can go ahead and identify yourself and address the council.
Yes, my name is Matthew Lael. I live at 605 Randolph Street. I appreciate you taking the time to offer this platform to citizens. And I apologize for not being there in person. I'm a state employee and we are at year end and I ended up leaving the office later than I had anticipated. But first and foremost, I want to thank Ms. Beauregard and Mayor Oaks. And I want you to please pass on my thanks to your staff at the city. I know that it is hard to be a public servant and you are probably understaffed and carrying a heavy workload. But my concern tonight is that of a public safety issue. I'm requesting assistance from my council members and city manager. The property that I view as a both public safety concern and, to be honest, a nuisance is 503 North Culture. There are, on the backside of Randolph Street, a pile of wood chips that the owner has dropped in the city right away about three months ago. And it does block Randolph Street if you meet a car coming on. There's been twice that I've actually had to back up to let a car through because I could not pass on what is supposed to be a two-car road. In addition, if the city does come through to Moe, I feel like that is going to be blocked. The second thing that I take umbrage to with this property is that on the front part of North Culture, where it intersects with Buchanan Street, there is a stop sign. And the owner of this property has planted trees that block the stop sign on the part that is in front of North Culture Street so that when I come up Buchanan Street, I cannot clearly see all of the traffic that is oncoming in North Culture. So I do feel like that is a huge safety concern. It's one that I personally feel strongly about. I do think there is also an excess of storage with this property, meaning trash and junk. I have reached out to Public Works to express my concern and have not heard back. So that is bothersome. I have posed issues with this property to other members of city staff and have heard back and had my concerns addressed appropriately. But in regards to the public safety, Public Works issues have not heard back. So that is concerning. The other thing that while I'm on the public safety kick is the amount of folks that I see on Route 250 who are asking for donations or money. That is troublesome to me because I am afraid that one day if I had a tire blowout or was rear-ended, that I would actually hit one of these folks and could potentially be liable. I have noticed the City of Wayneboro has signage up to discourage folks from giving these panhandlers money and handouts. And I would encourage the city to consider adopting a similar policy. And that is the main reason I wanted to address this meeting tonight. But I do want to comment as someone who's attended one of these meetings for the first time that at times I was embarrassed as well, as Ms. Crawford said. I felt like the council, specifically one member, spoke with a great amount of vitriol and insolence and immaturity. And I would encourage you all to remember you are better together than you are apart and that you have a job to do and that is to effectively serve the community. As a supervisor, in my job, always try to be the example. And I would encourage the members of city council to do the same. And with that, I appreciate you all very much and hope you have a great evening.
Thank you. Would anyone from the, oh, welcome.
So you probably all have television and you've been watching some pretty terrible things about anger and hatred and suffering. Suffering that's hard to talk about. But there's another side to the story too. And so I'm bringing you, I'm reading directly from the Journal of the American Medical Association. And this is written by a doctor from an emergency department in Chicago. And the title is, "We Are Drowning." "I'm a second-year emergency medical resident and I'm exhausted. Every day I bear witness to tragedies. I watch as patients experience the worst days of their lives, pronouncing patients dead and hearing cries of their loved ones. And immediately after these events, often horrible tragedies, on top of worsening emotional fatigue, my colleagues and I are expected to just get on with it. In sitting in morning report, listening to a barrage of death and tragedy again, just five minutes ago, I heard a colleague tell a patient their partner had died. I listened to the patient's sobs through the thin curtains, her devastation without privacy. We become jaded, callous, and cynical. Flipping, flippant comments, just another code, just another death. We've done this before. This won't be a problem. And maybe it won't be until it is, until this dealing, not dealing with emotional turmoil surfaces in other ways. I feel this internal disquiet, unease, even after just a few years. I'm angry, angry at my patients. Oh, and the next patient isn't vaccinated against COVID-19, even after all this time. Don't they know the dozens of deaths I've pronounced upstairs in the intensive care unit? Selfish and excusable. But really, I'm angry at myself. How can I feel this way? How can I be thinking these things? I hold empathy for patients and human connection in the highest regard. I feel disconnected from my non-medical friends and family. It's difficult to relate to them and difficult to care about other issues like world events and politics. Meanwhile, my bad day at work is a child dying. In front of me, hearing his mother screams as she falls to the ground, hands clutching the hospital bed as we declare the time of death. And what about taxes? What about those parents? I'm constantly on high alert. I jump at noises, the sounds of people running, raised voices. My colleagues and I witnessed so much tragedy. I try to protect myself by not feeling. But that has made me hardened and angry. I don't know how to protect myself because. because feeling the pain all this time was too much. But I don't want to feel angry, dismissive, and patronizing. As healthcare workers, we are overworked, exhausted, suffering, and emotionally drained. And the system simply does not provide time to cope. I stand in the doorway of that child's room, the mother still laying on the bed. I'm frozen. My phone rings. There's another patient. I have to go. I tear myself away from the tragedy in front of me. We need the ability to take a few hours, maybe even a day after a traumatic case, as opposed to feeling guilty about calling in sick while another resident has to cover for us. We deserve more time and space to process and heal. We can't help our patients heal if we are breaking inside too. I'm trying to be more present in my sadness. On my drive home, I can still hear heartbreaking screams of that mother echoing in my ears. I see these patients over and over again and feel flashes of heartbreak. I won't forget them. I can't."
Thank you. Mr. Kessiker, does anyone have their hands raised in Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Right. Would anyone else from the audience care to address the council?
Welcome. Hi, Yvonne Wilson, 2017 First Street. I just wanted to quickly say, been on the campaign trail, kind of getting signatures, and I appreciate a lot of the citizens of Stanton taking the time to talk to me, meet with me, and, you know, tell me what their vision is for the city. And hopefully, I get elected to city council that I would be able to help push those visions and make those reality. I understand that this Diversity and Equity Commission has been a very important, serious, passionate project. I don't even want to call it a project because it actually goes beyond that. But what I see is what a lot of people are seeing is a lot of animosity. But I don't think it's animosity from racism or sexism or anything else. I think what's going on is that you're fighting spiritual battles with your flesh and your emotions. I know because I do it too. And what needs to be understood is that diversity, equity, unity, these all have spiritual foundations. And the reason why we can't get along and we can't talk and we can't come to a consensus because you're going in with your flesh instead of your spirit. I know because I do it all the time. A lot of you have heard me spoken, and I have walked in here with my flesh on my sleeve. I admit that. That's fine. If the foundation of this commission is not dealt with on a spiritual and compassionate level, it will fail. You're not going to get the agreement that you want. You're not going to have the consensus that you want. You're not going to have anything. It will fail. Because ego ruins things. There's a lot of ego that has been put in this forming of the commission. There are people that want certain things that don't agree with them to go away and always have something that settles with them. That is selfish. That is not the spirit of equity, diversity, or unity, is it? And I, I know some people are going to be like, oh, she's always being, I'm being, I'm, I'm always spiritual because I walk by that. And I've learned, even when I served in the Marines, that the spirit of your leader infects the whole unit. If your leader is spiritually weak, so will be your troops. So I am asking for all of those who are leaders in this commission understand what the spiritual ramifications are. Because animosity is a spiritual thing. You use it by flesh, but it's a spirit thing. And that has to be fixed first before we can even talk about anything else dealing with whatever disparities that we have in the city of Stanton. And if you want that done, if you want positive, progressive balance, you got to deal with that foundation, which is our spirit first. We can't take care of our streets. We can't do the infrastructure without taking care of the spirit first. We can't look out for public safety and make sure that the mental health crisis is looked after without taking care of the spirit first. I'm running for city council in a spiritual way first because I don't want my flesh to taint the vision and the spirit of this city. I hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessiker, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
Right. Would anyone else? Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks, members of council. My name is Alice Woods, and I live at 915 Grove Lane here in Stanton. I am running for a seat on city council. I just want to address what was done earlier today, this evening. It's called the vision. And as Yvonne so graciously said, that we have to walk by the spirit. The vision is a spiritual attribute of not walking in the spirit. It seems like there's a lot of division, and it's not just here in the room. It's also outside in our city because what goes on here in the room also goes outside in our city. We all live here. We have to carry ourselves graciously and with integrity that we don't taint our city. But it has already been tainted. So I want to commend Amy Darby for bringing into unity what was, getting ready to tear things apart. It shouldn't have happened like that. Whenever y'all find yourselves going into a tit-for-tat, why not just say, hey, let's table this and come back? We won't always agree, but we can agree to disagree. I want to commend council member Mead for her passion and commitment for this Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission. I want to thank you so much for making it accessible to the community. We talk about trust. We threw that word around like somebody hurt me. But trust goes two ways. Trust in here amongst you all cells and trust with the citizens of Stanton. I believe some of the citizens of Stanton has lost trust in council and you all because of what was displayed today. The unity, it needs to come back. The togetherness of a council voting on things and doing things the right way, even when you don't agree. That's diversity. Diversity is here. It means that we all think differently but come to agreement one with another to get the job done. This commission that has been formed is a powerful one because what it brings is bringing what half of us couldn't bring into the city council because it reaches out. It reaches out in our city to our citizens and asks, what, what is your concerns? What is your ideas? What do you see going wrong? What you see going right? And then it comes together and try to work on their problems. I know council member Mead is leaving. Okay, that's fine. But it's not like she needs, you need to be updated of what's going on because you will be updated as council. But to have just one particular person be on there don't mean that everybody's going to know because we've seen it before. Everybody on council is going to know what's going on. So by having you two together, I believe that would make it better. To build this city to where it needs to be, togetherness, unity, running in harmony, peaceful to live in for all people that live in this city. You have to do it together, not apart. So I just want to give you something to think about. Unity, togetherness, harmony. What does that mean to you? Does it mean coming in here disagreeing and fighting amongst yourselves? No. As an embarrassment, as one person already spoke, being embarrassed, yes, tonight was an embarrassment. But I am so glad that y'all did come to a consensus and bring it together.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Kessiker.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anyone have their hand raised?
Yes.
Hi, caller. If you can please state your name and you can begin speaking.
Yes, my name is Jack Curialason. I'm at 241 Thorn Rose Avenue in Stanton. I'd like to applaud Alice's comments that she just finished about division. I would like to wholeheartedly thank Brenda Mead for her passion and her dedication not only to founding, forming this commission and seeing it through, but to her work as a council member. I have found her integrity to be unimpeachable. She has been consistently the most interested in hearing differing points of view. What I saw tonight was the mayor throwing a tantrum, trying to grab credit. It was unseemly. I don't know what your game is, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to reflect well in you. And I would also like to actually endorse Ms. Darby's attempt to come to some sort of meaningful resolution of this. Those are words I never expected to say, frankly, but credit where credit is due. You need to do better. Stanton needs better from you. City council worked at one time. Under this mayor and vice mayor, the city council doesn't work anymore. Now, maybe that's just coincidence, but using Occam's razor, often the simplest explanation is the best. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Hawley, welcome.
No man is an island. No man stands alone. Each man's grief is joy above. Each man's grief is my own. We need one another. So I will defend each one as my brother. Each one as my friend. I saw the people gather. I heard the music start. The song that they were singing is ringing in my heart. No man is an island. No man stands alone. Each one's grief is joy to me. Each one's grief is my own. We need one another. So I will defend each one as my brother. Each one as my friend. No one is an island. No one stands alone.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Hawley. Do we have anyone with their hands raised, Mr. Kessiker?
No, ma'am.
Right. Would anyone else in the audience care to address the council? Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Barbara Lee at 904 Rockway Street, Stanton, Virginia. And it has been an exciting year to come to city council meetings. We have two adults in the room tonight, Ms. Mead and Ms. Doll. I expect better of anybody on this council who's over 50 years old to try to get along. You're not doing that. You're not even trying anymore. Yes, Ms. Mead and Ms. Doll will be gone, but you will remain to be seen as grownups. Have some respect, if nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessiker, does anyone have their hand raised?
No, ma'am.
Right. Would anyone else from the audience care to address the council? Hearing none is the mayor of the city of Stanton. I call this meeting of May 26, 2022, adjourned.